This conference will now be recorded.
Here.
Mr. Kish?
Here.
He's here, okay. And let the record also reflect, the district manager, attorney engineer, Mitch Gilbert, Florida Utility Systems, and Chris Dudek with Premier District is also in attendance. So, first item, and we can always, oh, we got Audrey coming in, let me get her. Make sure I've got all the public, I got Joyce, okay, if I missed anyone from the audience, I've got Ray Jensen, Michelle Holloway, Diane Morrow, Joyce Carlino, John Del DiBo, and then Audrey Sanders. Did I miss anyone? All right. Okay, Russ, you want me to run the meeting until Tony comes on, or he usually has me?
Absolutely, absolutely.
First item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Tony comes in and has something to add, then we will add it, but as it is right now, is there any, someone's coming in that might be Tony now?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know why, dial the same number I did before, I don't know what happened there.
Okay, Chris, you can identify.
Yes.
Tony, we've gone through the roll call, identified all of the resident participants, and now we're at approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, there's only one thing I might discuss, and that's a handling of correspondence to the homeowners.
Okay, that, can you bring that up on your supervisor comments? Or do you want it as an agenda item? Okay.
No, supervisor comments.
Okay, there are no other agenda items, or the agenda's okay as submitted? Need a motion to approve it?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll take us to audience comments on agenda items. If somebody has something to say, and they would, it's on the agenda, please unmute yourself and we'll call on you. Okay, Diane Morrow, do you have anything, or is your letter sufficient?
Well, like we spoke yesterday, Cal, I tried to not to have too much emotion in my voice, because we had had some bad news, and it was continuing, and it's still continuing. But I tried to explain to you, and hopefully to the board, the position that we're in, and it's not like, I had said in the beginning, it's not like we didn't want to do our fiduciary duty. We've been involved with the CID at different times, and we've always tried to do the, exactly what the CID would allow us to do, and permitted us to do. And this is something where I am reaching out, as simple as that, reaching out to let you people know the position we're in, and it's not because we don't want to do our fiduciary duty at this moment in time. And I'm speaking for eighty-four doors, that we cannot, we cannot.
For clarification purposes, Ms. Morals, that's on the Stella Morris paving, which is Agenda Item 11A1. Hey, is there anyone else I'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on, and that'll take us to the minutes. You have a copy of the minutes? Any corrections or changes?
I, I have one, Cal. Is the gentleman from Fakahatchee, is his last name Houseneck?
I believe it was.
Okay, that's what was written in the minutes, and it, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's Houseneck.
Okay.
I forget exactly how it's spelled, but that's, that is proper.
Okay, thank you.
I got that off of one of his correspondence with me, so.
Okay, cool.
Okay, any other questions, comments, changes? Need a motion to approve that?
So.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Kelmeyer, seconded by Ms. Dillon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wait, that, Mitch, that takes us to your utility report.
Good morning. There's not a whole lot to report on the utility this month. Everything is, is working well. The water plant, we did have a pump failure on the number one well, I'm sorry, number two well. We have three wells, the number two and number three are still running and keeping everything going just fine. We'll get the number two well pulled and see what it is, so that we can get it repaired. The water plant itself, no issues at all. Everything is, is running along fine. Had a few storms, but the generator came on just like it's supposed to, and, and kicked on and took care of the, the power, so we've, of course, had no loss of water. The wastewater plant, it's making excellent affluent lift stations. We've had a couple callouts, but was nothing major, just simple stuff. Really, nothing to report that is negative, other than the number two well. Everything is working fine.
Mitch, the, the number two well, didn't we replace that well, that pump?
We, we did, we did, yes sir. It's been a year or two ago, but I'll pull it out and see. It may be wiring, it may be the motor, it may just be a connection down there.
Is it still under warranty, or what? Because I, I thought that was within, within the last year that we did that.
It, it may have been. I'll have to pull it up, and that's why I didn't give any, any real details on it until I pull it out and see. If it's even close to warranty, I will fight for it to get it covered under warranty.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions of Mitch?
I do. Um, how are you coming, how are you coming with the backflow preventer handles? Are they in?
They did come in. I haven't had a chance to get them on, but I'm gonna have my weekend guys start changing them out. So, you'll start seeing them, see them change out here shortly.
Okay, um, has the back room been cleaned out yet, or is Chris's guys gonna do that?
Uh, I didn't clean the back room. I can, again, I don't know what is garbage there and what's not. I would be glad to get a dumpster down there if they want to throw a bunch of it away. I guess I could coordinate with Chris and, and find out how he wants to proceed with that, but.
That, okay, that would be wonderful. And my third thing is, how's the meter coming in front of 333 Newport slash Sunrise K? That's the one where it's close to the road, and it's starting to chew up the blacktop.
You know, Catherine, we replaced a bunch of meters, and that's one that's on the list, but I don't think it got done, because we have to extend it out, so I, I think I, I think that has not been done, and I apologize, but I will make sure that's taken care of before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a question, I don't know if it's Mitch, I guess it is. Over on Newport K, in the front swale there, where, where it turns into a, you know, three sections coming together, it's, why is it so deep all the time? Why is it holding so much water?
I do not, that, that's not me, I don't know.
Yeah, I can address that, and we're looking at it, want to, that's on my list to talk to Ron. We're, for some reason, it's not draining, and so it's hitting a point where it's not, it's causing it to pond. And so, you know, we'd like to have Ron look at it, as much chance he can, to make sure that there, if there's any obstruction, maybe it's just removal of dirt, and we can get that done, or we'll get with the builder, if that's something that they had done. Now, you're talking about where those houses were built, right, Russ?
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, it's right after the, it's north side of the houses that are being built.
Right.
Just north of that, yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's in Chris's report, Ron, and I think you get copied on it, but it's, the swale is filling, and it's not draining properly, and it looks like there's some blockage, either some dirt was put in there, but it's, it's, it's high and it's not running properly.
Cal, this is Ron. Is, is that in the, near the one where Mr. Fink sent me the photos?
I'm not sure.
I, I sent the photos from Mr. Fink on to you.
Right.
And he sent them to me twice, and if that's the same place.
I don't think it is, but Chris has got it on his list, and he's gonna look at Mr. Fink's issue on his next trip out there.
Yeah, I've, I've been holding off, you know, taking any time to go out there and investigate myself, because I thought Chris probably could take the first look, and that would be a lot more economical for the CID.
Yeah, I, I think it's a separate issue.
Okay, well, once Chris has looked at it, if he could send me an email, and if I need to just, you know, drive out there and take a look, you know, I'll, I'll do that, but I didn't want to do it unless we knew that it was something that needed more than what Chris can take care of.
Right.
Okay.
So we got two areas.
Yeah, I think there's two. I think Mr. Fink's area is just, you know, part of the, might be a little bit of dirt at one end, about a culvert, but in general, I think it's the, you know, purpose of the swale is to hold water, you know, after a storm, and let the water perk in the ground, and recharge the aquifer, as well as get, you know, some treatment of that first half, half inch to an inch of flushing the, anything off the road surface.
Okay.
Where's Mr. Fink located at?
Let me give you his address. You'll have to give me a minute, I'm looking up his email.
Cal, I got one, one other thing for you. It's that, where the new build was, and he proved that that was not his responsibility on K's Drive by the drain, I think if, there's just an edge up there, I mean, I don't know if we have to replace all that, or did we already put a work order in for that, because I think if it was, like we grind down the sidewalks, there's just a high edge there. If we just ground that down, I think that might take care of it.
Yeah, either that, or maybe put some type of an epoxy where you're going to fill that in. Grinding is the best way to go, though, and.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Uh, this is Ron again. The address is 110 Newport K.
Okay, thank you.
The other one's 121 Newport Drive.
Right.
Yeah, I think they're different sections.
Yeah.
And again, if, once Chris has looked at it, if he wants to send me a text or a email, and, you know, take a picture, and then ask a question, or whatever, probably we can, if he does, if he can't just take care of it himself, I'm sure we can do it over the phone, and save you, me having to travel out there, spend the hours to do that.
Okay. All right. Moving on then to the landscape.
Okay, I heard from Robert this morning. He's covering for people, Claire in the office, and most of his people are from Imoculi, and they've been affected by the virus. Everybody is home, nobody is seriously sick, but of course, that stresses, puts stress on everybody else as far as covering things, but we did go through the list of what was in the report, and some other things that we had talked about before. Going down the list, the growing season is here, there's a whole lot of water everywhere, and that's hampering some things from getting done. The crepe myrtles, the dead leaves on forty, or the dead limbs on 41, and the pink ribbons have been removed. The rain's taking care of the wet spots, or the dry spots on Newport. The boganvillea on Newport, and the dead tree, shed tree over by the water plant, they'll be taken care of Monday. I don't know if he got with you, Mitch, about the clump of dead grass and things from where you did a repair over there by the gate at the water plant, but that's one, yeah, that's one of the things he'll get with you about, Mitch, and also, he gave us a quote for moving the box for the meter, or the irrigation there on 41, to go back towards where the, on the west side of the canal, where all that electrical equipment is. He gave us a quote for that. However, he had an electrician out there, they seem to trace where the wires go, so Robert is gonna get with Mitch to see about who's responsible for a meter out that way, and see if we can do something other than moving that box, and just repairing what needs to be repaired. So, Robert's gonna get with Mitch about delving more into that situation. The light out on the sign for Newport Drive, that's been out for a while, is on order. It will be covered under warranty, but it, because it's a little bit older, it needs to be special ordered. Tree braces at the plant, I'm assuming they've been done, because Robert said everything on the list has been done. We didn't talk about the 41, where it's holding water there by the Newport exit, I think is where it's at. He was gonna look at that, but I don't know if the water is still standing, but with as much rain as we've had, and I know I've had reports at my building where things have been flooded that have never been flooded before, so I think that's a big issue. I think that's been about it. That was on his report. Anybody have anything? And I just texted him about the sprinkler head over there at Orchid Cove, so he's aware of that. Haven't heard back from him, but I don't expect to, but I did let him know. Anybody have anything on their list for Robert? Terry, I know he's gonna get with you about doing a drive-through, so you become familiar. He's aware of that, so.
Yeah, he said June or July.
Yeah.
There's still.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, that's it.
Well, the only thing I have, it's not, I don't know if it's not Soto. What happened with the water plant, guys? The guys taking care of the ponds? Things were gonna be planted? Have things been done? I mean, I, I can't tell.
No, that, it hasn't yet. You're getting some natural growth, but he's planning on, by the end of the month, wanted to wait till they get enough water to be able to, you know, sustain them, because there's irrigation.
Right.
Well, by the end of the month, they're supposed to be planted.
Okay, because there's plenty of water.
Okay, but yeah, that's, that's when that's gonna happen. All right, ready to move on? That'll take us to the district manager. You gotta cap, the only thing I had was financials. It, they got out a little later than we'd anticipated. The problem being that we, our final review is done by a CPA, and unfortunately, he was in the hospital, but he got out and finished his review, and, and we got those out, so. Any questions?
I, I do.
Okay.
Late fee to Century Link, I, I realize it's only a small amount, but paying late fees just goes against my grain, and I'm sure everybody else's grain. I don't know why it happened, other than the check was written later.
They just, when we did it, turned them over within seven days, and, you know, they, they give us a very short window of opportunity to, to respond.
Okay. And the other thing I had, the electric bill format, it has changed from the way it was going, from one sheet where it looked like a bunch of meters were grouped together, and then separated between the general fund and the water sewer fund. This time, I think it was three, four, five pages with little amounts, and Evening Star K, I only printed off one page, and a whole page of Evening Star K with like fourteen dollars for whatever. Why? Was the change going from one way to another way, or is it creating more work for you, or less work?
I, the, the accounting staff didn't say anything to me, so I don't know if it's creating more work. Most all of that's generated by the accounting software.
Mm-hmm, okay. It's just that it was different from a couple months ago. Last month, we only had the last copy of the LCEC bill, and then the month before was the normal format, which was all on one page, and this time, it was broken down by a bunch. Just curious why it changed, that's all.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, just need a motion to accept the financials as presented.
So moved.
I second that.
Is that Ms. O'Connell?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I just want to say it, I'm so happy to see that debt service payment was made.
Oh. One more, and we're done, yes. I agree. The, you got a copy of Chris's report? Several of the items he had mentioned were already discussed, but, you know, shoreline weeds, torpedo grass, we're getting on them like that. I think Earth Guard is really a small company, and I'm not, and, you know, they're only coming out once a month, which isn't bad, but, you know, it's hard for them to stay up on a lot of these things, but with ponds, they should be able to. The 300 plants that we talked about earlier is supposed to be done by the end of the month, is what they tell us. Chris's crew, when they come in, they come in one day a month, and, and he took care of the trash around the retention ponds, part of that. There, you're getting some alligatoring along, well, this is the last island, island on Newport Drive, but alligatoring eventually breaks away, and, you know, you've got no asphalt there. Potholes, that's later on in the agenda. He does have, on, on Wilderness K, there's a concrete that shifted there, and they'll grind that down. We're looking at the area of the catch basins, as far as cleaning that up. We're gonna get with Mitch, ask him to suck a lot of that debris out, and then we'll get with Soto and have him clean up around that, but we do need to get that, that catch basin taken care of, and the erosion addressed. The issue on the invasive plants, quite a few of them been taken care of. You know, I'd like to get Robert to look at those again, and just kinda, Robert took care of almost all of them through the property owner, and this, this is a private property issue, but we'd like to get his input on a lot of this. But you see, Chris's summary of where they were removed, or where they weren't removed, and, and we will, we're staying on that, we're working on it.
So, so you'll get with Robert on that, Cal?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any thing else in the report that anyone wants to discuss, or mention, or make sure that we look at, or, I mean, Chris, when he's got Adam in here, any of the small things they can take care of, that's what they do, and they just work off of this maintenance list that's being generated. It used to be about, you know, when we first started, about three pages, and now it's whittling down.
That's good. I appreciate them doing the little things, because they really add up to making things look sloppy and messy. I, I have, I have one question. There was somebody in, I think it's 135 Winward K, where the homeowner put a catch basin, and then got it out into the canal. It was in Chris's report. I don't have exactly where it's at in Chris's report. Is there any problem with doing that? I know at one time, wasn't that a big issue with all that drainage and new construction, and?
You could answer that. I don't know if you've got the report, but it's on page 21, and it is 135 Winward K, and they put a small 12 by 12 landscape drainage box, and, and then they ran it right out into the seawall, and they dump out there.
Yeah, this is Ron. I saw that, and I'm gonna abstain from comment.
Why?
Why? The reason is, if we did that, we could be potentially in trouble with the county.
Oh, we did not do that.
I know we didn't. That's why I'm, you know, if a homeowner did it, and we were, I guess we have two choices. We could go all the way up and down the canal, or the swale, and identify where other people have done that. There's, just may not be as visible today, because it's got stuff growing over it. But I, I think we had decided we were not going to police that, and that's the board.
They do exist, and other residents.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it defeats, it defeats the purpose of part of, of why that system was required in order to get the permit for the development of that whole section of the community, and my, my recommendation to, to Cal previously was that, you know, we not bring it to anybody's, we don't want to bring attention to something like that with the county, since it is contrary to the permit. So you're kind of letting it go.
Right.
Ron?
Yes?
It, if it's contrary to the permit with the county, and if the CID lets it go, are we exposing ourselves to any liability for not pointing that out to the county, or for, you know, for instructing the homeowners to change that, or, or some of those old enough that it's a moot point now, because usually, if there's something going on that's wrong, you know, it's all gonna flow downstream to the CID at some point, possibly.
Well, my observation would, would be that that no one from the county's out there inspecting any of this. The only time they come out and inspect anything is when a new house gets built, so as long as a new house is built properly, that's, you know, and we have, obviously, in a lot of cases, we have to count. uh, that's, you know, and, and we have, obviously in a lot of cases, we have to kinda remind the county and, and the builder what to, what to do as far as giving copies of the plans and uh, periodically, you know, check to make sure nobody's totally filled in the swale or done anything that would be, uh, detrimental to their neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but I.
Well, I guess, I guess it is, uh, I don't, I think if, if anything, uh, came up, you would be able to say that that you didn't do it. A homeowner did it on his yard in a place where you have a drainage easement and I think that, I think, I think that's the, the way that you have the minimum cost and, uh, number of, uh, residents, uh, asking questions. Otherwise, otherwise if we're gonna police it, we gotta, we probably ought to do the whole thing. And, and that, that, you know, was, uh, something we decided not to do.
At this time.
Yeah, I have one neighbor that, uh, must have gotten a variance to build a pool onto the house. So they encroached on the back stepback and it did cause a drainage problem. At the time they did that, they put a drain into the canal to avoid that whole wall paving in. So I'm, I'm pretty sure the county's aware of it.
Yeah.
Because it was done at the time of construction.
Well, yeah, and what, what we did when we've been aware of houses being built and anything about uh, setbacks and things of that nature. If, if they were, uh, you know, the swale is, is not very deep and it's a wide V. Uh, I think it's, I don't know, 16 feet or 15 feet wide and it's only 18 inches at most at the center and it's a very, uh, slight slope V. Is when they cut in or they built into that V-shaped swale, we asked them, again, we don't have control of what the county approves as building permits. But when they encroached, we've asked them to dig out the swale where it's, uh, deeper for a shaft, for a narrower area, but, but deeper. Instead of being a V, more of a rectangular shape to try to get back what they encroached. And again, all these things are where we, we have no control of what building permits are issued. And try to just make the whole thing work the best it can. And, you know, not spend, spend any money. And again, I don't think we have a lot of police authority anyway, so, um. I guess it's better, at this point, I think it's better just to leave it alone.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, and Ron is correct. Ron is correct. We have no enforcement authority. Uh, but what we can do is go through the legal courses, uh, to rectify any wrong that we see. But, uh, you know, the board has always taken the position that, uh, other than keeping it clear, uh, which we do cite people for, but we haven't really done anything on things like this. In fact, I think Robert does most of those, uh, connections.
Yeah, one, one other thing, uh, and within Chris's report. You know, he had, uh, some vegetation removed where the, uh, water leaves the road and goes back toward the swale at the end of the street, which is part of the overall road drainage system. And one, and he's also done things in the last year. Uh, you know, along, along the road where there was, uh, problems and, you know, there's been some areas where the vegetation's been taken out and a little bit of dirt's been removed and you've cited people and maybe they did what they were supposed to. And so there's, there's a general bringing it up to a little bit closer to the, uh, permitted standard. Uh, so I think it's, it's much better than it was a few years ago. Uh, but it's incrementally better, uh, and, and, and to, to bring it all the way to what was in the original permitted drawings may not be considered an improvement by a lot of people. So we're just trying to the happy medium.
So very politically correct statement, Ron.
Happy medium.
Happy medium, yes. Uh, anything else on Chris's report? Okay, moving right along, uh, we're looking at his follow-up items. We talked about the lake maintenance and littoral plantings and, um, you know, the lakes do, uh, with the additional treatment and, uh, the, the retention ponds, the three retention ponds. And Golden Cana is, uh, most of the plants that are gonna be, they'll probably sprinkle in a little pickerel weed, but, uh, Golden, oh, Golden Cana will be the predominant plant. It does really well in that area and it, uh, you know, has a beautiful flower on it. Um, the Wilderness, the Wilderness K, uh, 157 concrete. Okay. Somebody, uh, I'm getting feedback, uh, on the, the two concrete repairs. Uh, Tensler, uh, we're trying to get ahold of them as far as coming in and we've had problems, but I, I think that's a good idea, Russ, at the one at, uh, I think it's 157 where, uh, as opposed to replacing a bunch of that, let's just grind it down. Uh, painting of the side monuments, uh, Chris had, uh, given a couple options on color. How he feels he's matched that up the best and, uh.
Been asked, uh, to ask the neighbor who did the song for Kane's Drive, his recommendation about color. And they said, keep it the beige color. Don't turn it dark. That was their recommendation.
Okay, so I'll pass that on to Chris and they'll get that taken care of. I think they plan on doing that themselves. Uh, then you had the tree root repair that was mentioned at the last, uh, meeting and, uh, that price would be, uh, 978.75. Uh, and they would cut that out, cut the root back and then replace the, uh, asphalt. You got pictures? This is on page 29. You've got pictures of the, uh, uh, area and, you know, and you can see how much of our area is gonna be replaced on that. That would be the orange dotted lines. So, you wanna have it done?
I think we should.
We should.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice unless you paint it yellow and call it a speed bump.
Does somebody wanna make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
I second that.
Yeah, I think I got Noreen first, Jerry. Sorry about that. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Ron, uh, that brings you up and any, I know that I, I believe they've started on the dock water, which might have prompted some of the, uh, seawall collapse.
Yeah, at this point, that is in Mitch's, uh, bailiwick because he, he was coordinating the, uh, tapping the water line and those things. And as far as, uh, my assistance and looking out for the CID, that's been completed. Did you, did you collect the fee, Cal?
Uh, it, I, it's supposed to be, I have not seen it physically, but it might have gone right to our, uh, uh, you, our, our receivables department, so, um, I will follow up on it, but they, they are aware of the fee and, uh, when I talked to the builder, uh, he said that it was in the mail.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, Mitch, have you, uh, heard anything about doing that tap yet?
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, installing the, I think, three inch meter?
Right.
Other than speaking with Cal about it, that's the only thing I've heard.
Yeah, so.
Until we get the check, we won't make the connection.
Yeah. Okay, well, there's no, I don't think there's anything further from me other than potentially, uh, if Mitch has any questions while he's, uh, out there do, coordinating with the contractor and, uh, you know, so I'm, I'm kinda off the hook then.
Okay, um, Mitch, uh, have you, uh, did you send me the cost of the backflow preventer?
Yes, sir. I was on vacation last week, so I was kinda putting all that together remotely. And I do believe I sent it over to you late one, one afternoon last week, but I, I can look and see and resend it, no problem.
I, I would appreciate that. Uh, for some reason, I don't recall it. The, uh, but the, the connection fee, uh, with the meter for the three inch meter is $14,000. They're aware of that. And, uh, the backflow preventer, uh, that is actual cost plus $200. And soon as we get the actual cost, uh, but I believe I, I think Mitch is right and we've communicated that to him. So we're just waiting on the check for the total fee. Okay? Anything for Ron? Dan, you're up. Dan?
Uh, the only thing I've got is actually on the agenda, uh, uh, the old business about the MBR. We've had some discussions, uh, we have a strategy to move forward. Uh, we're going to try to minimize costs at first and, uh, before we do anything that's going to uh, be extremely costly with that, you're, are much more than just a couple, three, $400. Uh, we will get your permission to move forward.
Okay, anything for Dan? All right, uh, that'll take us to old business and the first one would be the pothole and roadway repairs. And I sent a memo identifying, uh, three different issues. One was, uh, Union Road and, uh, you had approved 1,700. It's actually 7,100.
Cal, 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 I would like to offer my apologies for having my dyslexia kick in between 17 and 71. I liked it better at 17. However.
Yeah. So, uh, as you see in Chris's report, it's getting worse and, uh, but it's gonna be $7,100. You guys still wanna do it?
Are, are we, are we basically repaving that whole stretch?
Uh, there's quite a bit of it that's gonna be paved. It's, uh, it'll be brought back up, but, you know, just where existing asphalt is. But if you wanna just hold off and repave it, we can, uh, have Ron draw up some specifications and, uh, we can go off for bid.
The only thing, this is raining.
It's gonna be a lot more than 7,100.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if we don't fix it now, we're gonna have more deterioration.
That's the.
You have the hotel issue going on and what's gonna happen with all that equipment coming in whenever that may be. I mean, I hate to spend 71, but I don't, I think we should.
I think it's cheaper in the long run.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All right, so the motion is to, uh, make the repairs as presented for $7,142.40 uh, to Union Road. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I, this is Ron. I think that one's bigger than where you can paint, put enough paint on it and call it a speed bump.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the, uh, next one would be the one, uh, that you received the letter on from, uh, Diane Morrow and the problems that they have. Uh, just as a, a background on that, the, uh, it was felt that the drainage hadn't been taken care of proper, the properly, which caused a lot of the, uh, the deterioration around the catch basin and the cul-de-sac wasn't properly graded to allow water to flow. Uh, so we got proposals. We had two there. One was to do the cul-de-sac and that would be 23,950 and then to do the asphalt repairs around that catch basin. And then several other within the road would be 1,0772.80 cents. Uh, the board had discussed but not approved, uh, sharing of that cost. I presented that to the villages of Stellamaris and, uh, Diane has said, you know, they'd like to participate. But, uh, unfortunately they're in a position where they are looking at, uh, over $2 million of repairs to the seawall. So financially they can't. So your options are to do nothing. Uh, which as she says is, uh, she, they feel it's a safety issue to do it yourself. Uh, or maybe to do it and then half of it would be extended to them. Uh, financed over a period of time. I, I, that just popped into my head, so I, I don't know if that's an option or not.
Cal, are we talking just about the $1,700 bill? Or are you include, you're talking the 20?
I, I think the 1,700 needs to be done. The 2,400 one is for the cul-de-sac and you're going to, you're, that area is never gonna drain properly and you're always gonna have a big hole there. You'll recall the pictures where you had that depressed area that water accumulates and doesn't get to the drive approach and run down so it can drain off. That would always be there. So I think as a minimum, you should do the, uh, $1,700 one.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's all we should do at this point, Cal. The, the, the larger amount, I don't think we need to carry that and finance it out. Uh, I mean, it's not, it, that part I don't think is that big of a safety issue. It's just a, uh, convenience issue more than anything else from our standpoint.
The cul-de-sac was just for emergency vehicles to make sure they can turn around, correct?
Turn around.
Yeah. Well, what's the safety? I don't even see a safety issue there. I don't understand what the safety issue is.
Well, the 1,700 one, I think that's more of the safety.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think the, I, I moved that we do the $1,700 repair issue and hold off on the rest. Depending on further information and developments and everything.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, Russ, were you shaking your head?
Yeah, I was shaking my head.
Yeah, I, that's what I had. I wrote down, so.
All right.
Okay, any, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to North Hotel and I've heard absolutely nothing from the county, uh, other than they're still getting bids for demolition.
Um, I, I got a question for you. I was at work and, um, I don't know how it came up. One of the nurses or something, but he said, "Oh, you live out there with that hotel where they give tours." I said, "What are you talking about?" She goes, "Oh, yeah, they give spooky tours." And she showed me pictures of her friend on a tour through the North Hotel. They were taking pictures. Yeah.
Wow.
So they, she paid for a tour to go to that hotel.
So they, she paid for a tour to go to that hotel. So that needs to be brought to somebody's attention or something.
Yeah.
Well, that's a county issue.
Yeah. So, and then the other thing is, my son said, when he's going to spray, if he does it at night instead of the morning, and he pulls around the back, you know, to get to the plant, there's sometimes there's two, three cars parked back there and they all bolt when he comes down the, down the road. Because they're doing more and more graffiti on that small building out there. So how come the cops never come through that? I mean, if they know they're habitually out there, probably, you know, anywhere between 11 and 2:00 in the morning. If they just couldn't take a swing through there or something every once in a while. They were sitting, they were sitting over by where they park all the vehicles over by the South Hotel. There were three cops sitting over there that morning when, when we went out. But they were just talking. They weren't driving around.
Okay.
They used to go by the North Hotel fairly regularly, but when they moved the substation up to 951, we've suffered a lack of coverage out here. They, they do come out, but they don't come around as often as they used to. But as far as your son, when it comes to their, Russ, if he can, or whoever's driving there, if they can get a picture of, you know, some tags on the cars or something, that's what the sheriff recommended before. And report those tag numbers to the vehicles that are out there. That would be a big help. Obviously, that's something that he may have, may not want to, you know, try to get involved with. But at the very least, if these cars out, let somebody know you or Cal or me or whatever, that we can call the sheriff and keep pounding on them to, you know, to make them come out more frequently.
Right. Well, I think somebody, we've got to let them know about the tours. So they're out there during the day. This was a daytime tour that you could tell by all the lighting in there when it was bright. So. Somebody's going to get hurt. Then who knows what's going to happen. So. I think you can even see it on YouTube. So.
Uh, you know, if, since you have somebody to take that tour, if you can discreetly find out who that contact was, who's giving the tours, then we can give that name to the sheriff and have them, have the sheriff, you know, contact those folks and, and do whatever they're supposed to do with them. But, you know, at least, you know, knock their head about it.
I don't, I don't even remember. It was a random nurse in the ER. I don't even remember who it was. But, you know, she just happened to hear that I was out there. And she goes, oh, yeah, I know where you're, yeah. So.
If you run, if you run across it again, try to find out who's, you know, you know, even if it's just a phone number, you know, call that phone number, find out who to contact, and then we'll pass that along to the sheriff.
Yeah.
I, I can get something off of YouTube. I'll look at the YouTube posting. And, you know, they always want, you know, subscriptions or some type of acknowledgement. And so we, we can get a connection there.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that. Okay. MBR issues, I think. Dan, you want to summarize where we're at on that?
But as I was saying earlier, we're, Ron and Mitch are going to spend a little bit laying out what our costs were as a result of the improper management. We'll follow that up with a letter to Severn Trent. If that generates any, if it works well, great. If not, then we'll come back to you with an analysis of litigation costs. We want to try to avoid that to the greatest extent possible.
Okay. And once Ron and Mitch come up with their identifiable losses, then we'll compare that to what we didn't pay them. And it might almost be a wash. We're not sure.
We only got to the end of the year, don't we? We've only got till the end of the year.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's, we should have this all nailed down here in the next couple of weeks. And be able to report later in your August meeting of what our next steps would be. One other thing I just, you know, is they are probably going to not extend the ability to be via electronic media beyond the end of this month. That's the feedback we're getting. So we're probably have to have at the July meeting, plans to meet together and, you know, a plan for how we're going to do that safely.
Correct.
Yeah. The, the MBR issue, the, the second part of that was everybody was going to get together to put together a summary of alternative uses or, or, you know, how we could remake the MBR. If we don't repair it and bring it back to what it was supposed to do or what it was designed to do. We're still going to do that, aren't we?
That's one of the other things that Mitch and Ron are doing. We did have our meeting. Dan, myself, Ron and Mitch, and discussed not just losses, but, you know, uses of the MBR. And that's still being developed.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I just want to be sure we didn't drop that.
Okay. Uh, the invasive vegetation update, we kind of covered that during Mitch's, or Chris's report. Uh, new business, the meter changeout program, we're still in the process of putting together the specifications and hope to have a draft set of specifications to the board prior to going out for bid. But, you know, we're starting on this early enough and should have no issues with it. Okay?
Okay.
Any comments so far? Anything?
On the meter changeout.
Yeah.
On the meter changeout, we're anticipating doing that in next year's budget, correct?
Right. Correct.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
But there's a lot of preparatory effort that has to go into place. We want to, we want to hit the road running once we get into the new fiscal year as quickly as possible. Before you know it, it's going to be the new fiscal year.
Yeah. What, this is Ron. What, what we've done is request from a few of the companies that make the type of product that we are considering to send us their standard specification. We'll, we're going to review those documents and write a short spec. It won't be detailed, but a spec that is for those types of products that would meet our needs. Minimum requirements. And then we would provide that to Cal. And then when it goes out for bid, for the work to be done next year, you'd be, you'll, you'll have what you need to do the bid.
Yep.
Do we have a, one, do we have a, a roundabout number on what we anticipate it to cost? I mean, it's not going to be a shock, is it?
No. The, the, what we budgeted was 300,000, or maybe 325. I forgot what, I don't have the budget in front of me. And that will easily cover all of the expense. Installation, purchase, everything.
Yeah. This, this is Ron. Mitch, Mitch had talked to two of the local companies, you know, that sell this type of stuff to utilities. And they gave him written quotes that were very close. I mean, within just, within hundreds of dollars out of something that's 100,000. I mean, it was very competitive. We know the price. You know, based on that. So I don't think you'll have any surprises. We just need to take the technical specs for each of those companies. Like, again, write a spec that says what your minimum standard is. And then since it's a large, you know, fairly large amount, then probably anybody could, could, could bid against that spec. So we have to make sure that we, we put enough, enough in there. It sets the minimum standards that we do know is, can be met by the companies that we would be willing to buy it from. So, you know, it's a standard purchasing, you know, type of thing that engineers, you know, participate in. So.
And it, it is large enough that it will require public bidding.
Cal, a comment on the North Hotel issue to go back to that for one moment? As a reminder, you know, the Collier County Board of Commissioners, you know, they're going to be shut down during August. So I don't know how much work will be done by the people, you know, you deal with, with the North Hotel. But give it some thought. You might want to contact them before the, our July meeting. Because if, if they don't do anything, if they're shut down during August, you know, also like the board, we won't have any comments from the county until probably October. Because the Board of Commissioners won't come back in until, until September. And they won't do anything then probably. So maybe just get an update prior to the July meeting. That'd be the last time we'll have any contact with them.
So you got it. Okay. Uh, moving on, supervisor comments. I think, Ms. O'Connell, you had something you wanted to raise.
I had one. This month, by accident or whatever, I don't know. But I received some phone calls about letter, a letter or letters that we sent out. And I was so dumbfounded because these people have read this letter. I'm totally unaware of the wording. And I feel these letters are sent. And the board is behind these letters. Is there any way we can, not the, the little things, but one of the letters, one of the comments were an outrageous fee for North Stella Mars. And the person said to me, they seen the letter. I didn't see it. I was totally dumbfounded. And it, it isn't that I want to resolve the issue. I want to at least be in a position where I can say, you know, call our management company. I see your concerns or whatever. But just to go by hearsay, I could have resolved it if I had a copy of that letter with me. I mean, fast forward, it was resolved. We didn't send a letter to that extent. But I wish I, I could have answered that at the time. I don't know if anybody else has a concern here, because I feel these letters represent the board. And the board doesn't know what we're saying. The other issue was the pepper hedge trees. And yes, they have to be removed. And I know if they're not, then the county steps in. But I'm not sure how we worded that. Or did we recommend Soto to contact him to remove it? Or other companies or whatever? I don't know.
No. The letter, I mean, and if the board wants to be copied on, I mean, the letter, the, the initial letter, we have no, there's no way we could ever share that with you because we didn't send it. We didn't know anything about it until you contacted me. But the, any letters we sent out, we can certainly copy the board, like on the pepper trees or anything else. I, you know, that.
Well, I think in the, in the one case, like you said, we didn't send the letter. But had I had a copy, because I knew we were sending that organization a letter, then I could have said, I do not see this in the letter. Then I would say, contact the management company. As far as I know, a letter did not go out stating that. And how does the other board members feel about this? Hello?
Well, that sounded like, sounded like an opinionated letter that you got, that they were talking about. What, why would the management company use the word outrageous price? Why would we, that doesn't sound right.
No, it doesn't.
No, I know it doesn't sound right, but I, I had no way of defending us saying we didn't send such a letter.
Well, I wonder if his, you know, the Stella Maris board maybe put out a letter or something.
It doesn't, that's not the issue, Tony. The issue is, if you get a phone call from a homeowner, you're on the board and you're totally clueless.
Well, you needed the letter. Terry, it is a point there because Stella Maris is the one that sent out that letter. And that person mistakenly thought it came from the CID.
I understand that. That's not the issue I'm talking about. I'm talking about, that was a sample I gave you. I'm talking about if a board member gets a phone call about a letter they received. I know as far as you, the board said, yes, let's say with the pepper hedge, send a letter. But I don't know what the letter said. And they're reading it. If they call me, I'm dumbfounded.
Well, why don't, why don't you ask them to send you a copy?
Well, this is what I'm, I'm bringing up. I'd like the board's input. How do they feel about the issue? Letters going out, presents us.
It is no problem for us to just send the board by email, a copy of any letter that goes out to the community from us. I, that's not an issue. That's not a problem. It's never been requested before. And, but we can do it.
I would like it. I don't know about the other board members. I don't know if they get calls from the homeowners, but I do.
Go ahead, Cal. Just, just put it on the list. Just send it out, man.
Yeah, not a problem.
Just email it.
Yeah, that's all. Just blind copy.
It doesn't even have to be a blind copy. I mean, there's nothing wrong with copying the board. I, you know, not a problem. Okay. Anything else? Uh, any other board member have something? Okay. That takes us to audience comments. We have quite a few audience members. I think I got everyone. Does anyone from the audience, why don't I go through the list? And if you have something, unmute your, unmute your mic and say something. Uh, and that way we can keep it somewhat organized. Ray Jensen, do you have anything? Okay. Michelle, Ray, did you? Okay. Michelle Holloway.
No comments.
Okay. Diana Morrow, anything else? Or you pretty well said?
Uh, yes, but I just wanted to say thank you for what everyone passed for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Joyce Carlino, anything?
No comment.
Uh, John Deldebiel.
No comments.
Okay. Audrey, anything?
Yes, I just want to let everyone know, we're still working on getting the candidates of District One for Collier Commissioner Office to come to a meeting in Rockaway Cove, probably mid-July. And I will let CID know more as soon as we get more information and dates.
Okay. Chuck Gordon, anything? Nope. Okay. I think we're ready to adjourn unless somebody has something else. Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved we adjourn.
Moved by Ms. Dillon. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The, just one real quick final comment. Ms. Dillon has opted not to run for reelection. And I know I've enjoyed working with her for a number of years. And I'll certainly miss her and all her contributions to the community. And wish you well and hope we see you again, Noreen.
Thank you.
How many years were you on the board, Noreen?
I don't know, something like 12 or, I don't know.
Wow.
Anyway.
You're braver than I am.
It's been like 2000.
It's a health issue. So.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you missed. You're still going to call in, right?
Oh, sure. I'm here till November.
All right. Good.
I'll give you a quick, I can look real quick and tell you how long she has been on. Rob, Noreen, you first came on in 2016.
16? Yeah.
That was the last election.
Yeah. I, it's been a long time. I.
It was earlier than that.
Yeah. I was probably 14, 16 years. So, all right. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Anyone want to say?
Have a good one. Father's Day.
Thank you all.